I call the Maplewood City Council Budget Work Session to order on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Reese, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coriel. Councilmember Crossley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah.
Mayor Kanapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Sure.
Councilmember Phillips. Mayor Kanapper, we do have a call.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Coriel?
Uh, motion to excuse, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Phillips?
Motion to excuse, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Reese, item number four.
Yes, uh, commission presentations.
Council, Parks and Recreation, um, is not able to be present for their presentation and ask that they be moved to the work session on April twenty-fifth. And I am not sure, I believe also, um, the president for the Sustainability Commission had a conflict in his schedule as well. Um, and so we do have the president for the Human Services Commission with us, Mr. Coriel, would you? Come on down, or up, or whatever. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you, we, you know, we gotta put you to work. You have to press the button the whole time. Alright.
Do I start?
Yes.
And I start by talking about our asking of the budget, right?
Yeah.
Well, I swear, let you, I think I'd sent this, I did send this to the mayor and to the council after the meeting wherein we came up with these budget items. But for the Human Services Commission, we have two asks that we have, uh, with the current budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, the first one was five thousand dollars for the Emergency Social Services Fund, uh, to provide assistance to meet emergency needs of individuals and families in Maplewood, with understanding that the city of Richmond Heights will also pony up five thousand dollars if they'll meet the, that. Um, and we're hoping that we can sort of have them to do that as well. So then getting close to ten, if not even more, if possible. So that's our first ask. And the second ask is three thousand dollars to hold an open house for the Maplewood Community Growth Foundation. Um, the open house will provide residents, as well as businesses and other interested parties, the opportunity to learn more about the foundation, meet with the board members once they are, um, elected or chosen, um, and receive the application information and materials. Uh, the open house will also make space available for Maplewood organizations that provide support and services for the community. Um, that final pose I add on that we have in our last meeting, we talked about having organizations like Maplegood and other local organizations come in and be at this open house, um, because we'll be partnering with them anyways, and to show individuals that we're there as a foundation, and this is who we're supporting and be working with, and we want people to see that and know more about it. And that's it.
I'm, quick question. So on the three thousand, do you have an idea, uh, like a further idea of how those funds would be sort of spent, unlike what specific items, or how much to food, or is there a rental space?
Uh, we don't have it, uh, drawn up, uh, itemized at this point, but yeah, it's mostly about the rental space. It's about having snacks, not, nothing like sort of formal, right? It's gonna be a very informal open house. So maybe snacks, goodies, some presents, maybe some swag, um, and then advertising for it as well, to make sure that people know. Um, we want to make sure that organizations, businesses, but also residents know that they can come. We can also possibly use some of that money towards transportation, uh, childcare, other things that sort of allow people to be there and hang out with us.
Just an idea, um, because I know we've had some conversations here about the elder fair. There might be an opportunity to capitalize on both of those, since those audiences might overlap anyways. Um, but that could help combine, planning efforts, costs, that type of thing. Um, but I was just sitting here thinking, that's an existing effort. Let it sink, let it sink in.
That's a good idea. If in one day we were wanting to also make sure we don't spread it out too much, we actually had lots of other suggestions as well at our last meeting, but the open house is also really intended to make sure that we just really foreground the foundation, which again does relate to the elders in the community, but making sure that people can meet the board members, um, and possibly get some of those businesses to come in and sort of get to know us and understand what we're doing and see if they might be interested in helping us out in terms of funds, right, donations, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Reese, I have a question, um, regarding commission requests. So this is the first time that we've had these requests under this new system that we have. Can you tell us how you are going to determine, like, what's in the budget to meet some of the requests, if not all? When would we learn that?
Sure. So I plan, um, for the consolidated budget that will be presented to council on May the second. Um, that's when, um, I, first of all, let me step back. I'm going to review each of these requests on their own merits. So we have some that are before us tonight, and then some that we'll hear about, um, at the meeting on April the twenty-fifth. So I'll gather all that information. Um, and they have some follow-up questions for those who presented. Uh, and may meet with my staff on some of those items. And then, um, uh, some might be based on what we can afford. And then I'll make a recommendation on May the second on those items. Um, so when the packet goes out on that Thursday or Friday, on May the second, that's when, um, it will address those items, or won't address those items, depending on what we can do. That's the plan.
Thank you. And when you are addressing those items in the memo that you give to us, can you just explain to us, like, this is where this money would come from? This is why we don't have enough to cover all of it, but we could cover some of it. Thank you.
Is this gonna be put in a legislative, uh, umbrella? Any ask from a commission?
Can you repeat the question, councilman?
So these asked, budgetary, from a budgetary perspective, what bucket are they gonna go under?
I think they'll go in different buckets. It depends on which one. Um, some may go in executive, some may go in legislative, some may go in a department. I think it depends on which one it's, you know. So. Yeah, we're, we're still, we're still in kind of mid, uh, mid-budget. It's, it's very premature right now, because we've got a lot of different dynamics going on with understanding where our revenues are for April. Um, uh, between Lexi and I, um, we just, we really just finished up with our public works budget that we're presenting tonight. We've got police, uh, executive legislative, SBD legal next week, so we want to evaluate each of these and give them proper consideration. So. Yeah. Sure, thank you.
Alright, uh, item number five, please.
Yes. Um, so we have proposed fee increase measures. Um, before I turn this over to, um, Anthony Tractor to speak about these, I just want to, uh, make a few introductory comments. So last year, during the consolidated, um, budget memo that I issued to council on May the fifth, on page three of that memo, just to quote the sentence, um, uh, I indicated that we will explore targeted fee increases in areas where the cost is not kept up with the service being provided. Um, so this is really to follow up on that memo. They try to capture as many fees as we can, where it makes sense. And as Anthony indicated in his memo, many of these fees have not been increased since the nineteen eighties, where the cost to provide these services has gone up each year. And so we have a number of fee increases. He'll give an example or two. Um, and if the council is in agreement with this, uh, with these, uh, fee increases, uh, proposed fee increases, we can count the revenue and then prepare ordinance, um, to be considered at the same time as the budget is considered. So, um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Anthony, so he can talk further about it.
Yeah, I think I've done a good job, so I'm alright. And as part of the, anytime I ask for an increase, I know the first question the council will, will ask is, you know, how do we compare to other cities? So we did some research, um. You'll see some, a lot of blanks in some of these cases. That doesn't mean, these places may or may not have a fee that you maybe the person we reached out to can give us all the information. We did a few follow-ups, but at some point, um, you just try to put down what information you have. Um. Lexi's gonna go through, uh, and when she does the revenue, to show how much revenue this will bring. It should bring in a decent sum, nothing far shattering, but a little bit to help offset the costs. Right now, I can start off with the top. When we talk about occupancy permit fee, about fifteen dollars to go to thirty, you can see we're still very reasonable compared to nearby cities. Each, each occupancy fee, or the majority, require two inspections. Usually there's a follow-up, but it's a minimum of one inspection, so, um, people always get a follow-up with three, and then after that, then there's additional charges. But basically, we've done those costs. We're still keeping those, uh, lower than any other, pretty much most any other city, uh, um, fee, with the exception of Richmond Heights. Um, occupancy commercial, right now, we didn't even have anything for an initial occupancy, and usually for a business that first inspection or series of inspections require usually substantial amount of time. So we were obviously missing out on that revenue, so we think that it's still a relatively, um, reasonable fee, uh, considering regions require a lot of handholding and some guidance, uh, mostly from the building official Brian Herr, and in some cases myself, but most of Brian. Uh, if anyone has a question, then I'm going to, please, uh, stop me. Um. Occupancy commercial and occupancy commercial re-inspections, it's, um, I think it was a pretty self-explanatory. It's still within a, a very reasonable fee range. Uh, we're just looking at the time and take for some of these inspections. Permit cost fees were very reasonable. Uh, one of the biggest problems was the permanent inspections below that. So for example, I'll use, um, I'll use a large project like a Walmart addition. Uh, we would basically just, the initial re-inspector fee at twenty-five dollars, and then every time Brian Herr had to go out to a Walmart, which might have been twenty or thirty trips, we're, we're giving five dollars a trip, so it's, it's we're not making much money off it. I don't think any business commercial fee, or anyone's gonna have any complaints about. Um, and that, that's where the one below that, a permanent inspection fee, that those are, those are inspection above and beyond what the initial fee was. Those are re-inspection fees, for five dollars, which is not not capturing enough. Uh, demo permits, if we look at demo grading, and then, uh, excavation deposit, that would be exit. Those are all just because if a contractor does damage to infrastructure, whether it be sidewalks, curbs and gutters, or the street itself, the, the, the problem we've had, we've had, we've had contractors do, do damage, and when they realize that they can either fix it for five hundred or a thousand, or even sometimes two or three thousand, or just keep the two hundred dollar deposit, they just said, keep my deposit, and maybe so this is a, a way to try to make sure this money goes back to whoever put it, it's a deposit. It just covers the city a little bit better. Fence inspections, the majority of them are, uh, two inspections. Usually have a, a fear inspection, and then you have a final. Um, it's still like, it's pretty reasonable for, for, for twenty-five dollars, also to do the permit, to do the, it's a very brief review. But, uh, we feel that very fair. Uh, you can see, um, you know, I think a hundred and twenty dollars is a reasonable, but you can see most of them, um, right around the, uh, we're still, we're all typically reasonable. Um. Resulting fee, um, that typically requires a, a staff report, uh, trying to do the analysis, to work with the, um, uh, with the particulars, also write reports, and then obviously go to the planning commission, and ultimately sometime the city council. Same thing with the planning, only an application fee. Uh, we're creating a new fee right there, called the zoning verification fee, that usually has to do with, um, when there's, uh, refinancing, which people would just wanna go ahead and get some basic information on it. If all they wanna do is know what it's on, it's a simple matter, but usually they're wanting to know about parking, uh, they're wanting to know about the construction, have any violations. Is the business in the plant, have they been ripped up? So it usually requires some, some research of staff, and so we're just looking for a way to get something out of it. Um. Board of adjustment, uh, commercial, we're pumping it up from three to two, or from one to three residential up to two. This will nowhere near recover cost, because for every board of adjustment hearing, we actually have that, uh, uh, city attorney present. We have to pay for that. We also have to pay for court recorder. Uh, and then also all the staff, they have to be done with the court recorder. It's a process, and basically the channel. So at every board of adjustment hearing, somewhere that you can see, you actually have that court recorder. So this is just a way to try to recover some cost. We've had, we didn't really want, we kept residential still very low, because, um, we don't want to discourage people making improvements to their homes. And a lot of our, the lot sizes and, and the existing configuration, the home, even minor improvements, sometimes do require variance. But we've had a number of instances where somebody's gonna ask for a variance that doesn't meet the standards. We're specifically gonna recommend, and then when we say, say, how much does it cost? Then we say, doesn't cost anything. They say, let's go ahead and give it a shot. And then we have to bring the board in, pay the court reporter, pay the attorney, take the time to write the recommendation, and then just to have it charted out. So we, we hope that that offers it being someone to give pause to whether they're gonna do that. And then the last thing, in architecture, with the board, you've all seen the packets, you've seen the, the staff reviews. There's a lot of package form between a building official, uh, and, um, petitioner, so it's just to try to recover some of those costs. I think I skipped over signage. We can see where our signage permits were, um, screening a little bit. So, uh, most of these are all, like I said, within reach and within reason, and usually lower than most adjacent municipalities. It should bring in some additional revenue, but we don't believe it'll be a shock to, to many people. Uh, and these are the ones that we use predominantly, which is why we chose, we're, uh, even grading permits, so minor, but we don't do that as much, but we can, we can have money on that, on, on deposit. We're having normal, we do walk away with the deposits. Then we're stuck with the builder, who will appear, so. Does anyone have any questions on any of these?
We have a process question, but Anthony, thank you for your work on this. Um, some of these initial numbers are very low, and I can very surprised that they're that low. So I, I, like, I appreciate the work that you've done on this. Michael, do we have to take this to, like, the vote of the people at all, or is this just an ordinance change? Beautiful, okay.
It's an ordinance change. We, we, when, when we were going through late last year, the process of which items had to go to voters, we, 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 you know, chose the one that did, of the two, the food truck and the auto dealership, and then all these. The city attorney made a determination, like, we do not need to, on the services audience. And, uh, we, we think, Anthony, see if you, you agree with this, is, is maybe getting these fees on a regular schedule that we increase every, every couple of years?
Yeah.
And not, not every thirty or forty years, but, you know, every maybe.
There's cool fees where you go up every five or ten years, and then that fee seems like one of the, one of the world, where you just go off very minor, and keep in mind, anytime we do a fee increase, we always check with nearby cities, and we always try to remain on the lower end, or on the lower end, if you can kind of see here. So we'll probably, maybe, be about every, maybe every five years. Because we don't wanna wait another, in some ways. Some of these are early days. Uh, quite a few of these were, uh, open, open three, I think, with the last, it wasn't federal, I mean. Um, so we haven't done it in a while.
Question, um, kind of a process question, too. So is, is our measuring stick other cities, or do we also look at the cost of living, inflation? What, what all do you take into consideration when you come up with these amounts?
This analysis, it was trying to just find out a way to capture more money without being a massive shock, and try to stay within what other cities are doing. Uh, I know Brentwood is in the process of raising their fee, um. But we have, we're still not recovering cost. Now, if I took inflation over time, it would be these costs. I go up, tend to go with these on basis, probably zero. But considering the way to go along with these, we wanted to just try to ease into it, and that's kind of like city manager release, that we're running, bringing these to a little more authentic nature, so there's not, we don't want them to feel traumatic jump. We still want to keep it affordable. We don't want to discourage people from, um, maybe a room addition, or a basement addition, or, um, maybe a new deck. Uh, we're trying to keep it, um, still, still reasonable, but we're just looking for ways to work, to roll fully adequate, take full makeup, and rather than anything. Then it's for the question, I know, didn't really kind of get a, a roundabout answer there, but.
I, I think it does. I think if I understood you correctly, if, if we did take into account the cost of living and inflation, like, this would not be affordable for people.
Yeah, alone in the last two years, I think I was looking back at Michael, like, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, in the last two years, if you do, over time.
So the.
And some of them aren't necessarily inflationary. So for example, when you're looking at a building, that, um, it, it's based on per thousand dollars of construction cost, right? So that construction cost has gone up, so we've actually captured some of those revenues, completion, none of those revenues is captured. But like a fence, we're out paying people, paying for fuel, paying for vehicles, or time. That is not captured. That, that money was lost over the years. And like I said, for a five-dollar fence, you have a minimum two inspections. That's probably about ninety percent of the fence. Sometimes they have to go out there on three or four days. We had one this morning. That's gonna require at least three inspections, because of the dispute that the neighbors putting it on, um, um, some other neighbor's property. So we went out and looked at some survey sticks, and met with the contractor before they started digging their holes for people. So that's an example where the five dollars was like, you know. Be out there at least three times in a, in a number of conversations with contractors and residents.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reese, you ready to?
Yes.
Proceed? Alright, then, uh, item number six.
Okay, city manager strategic priorities. So, uh, pause here for a second, Lexi pulls up.
No.
Yeah.
Well, I'm actually gonna go in phases here. I'll have, um, strategic priorities in three different, uh, cases associated with the three different budgets that are gonna be presented. The first one, um, well, just, just as a reminder, again, we're aligning, um, this budget with the strategic plan, specifically the seven strategies that were adopted last year. And, um, so, uh, can you, uh, enhance that, Lexi, by chance?
Okay.
Yeah, a little bit more. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, the first one, under existing projects and programs, we have our horticulture and master gardening training, which is a customer-focused, technology and training-focused, and community well-being focused. And, um, this specifically is, we want to continue to have our public works employee, Joe Watts, uh, keep his certification, so that he can use best practices for our overall gardening efforts, what the plant, maintenance, et cetera. But we're very proud of that certification, and, and, um, um, that's, uh, an ongoing, an ongoing project and program. Um, the next one is our, uh, street excavation construction training, um, which highlights technology and training focus and community well-being focus. And you'll see a theme of public works of, uh, of training and safety of our employees. You'll see a theme throughout, throughout the strategic priorities there. And, um, this is really about our public work staff using best practices in the field to protect the infrastructure by monitoring, uh, utility excavations, uh, because we have so many underground utilities. Okay, so that's what that's, that's really about, so training them appropriately. Um, so we're not, uh, um, digging where we shouldn't be digging, and, um, with all the underground utilities. Under new, that, new initiatives, again, training for Class A CDL, um, right now, we have, we have Class B, but we need to have training for Class A. This allows our public works employees to receive an additional level of training, um, related to the weight of the truck and material being, being towed. For example, um, especially when we tow the bandwagon, uh, related to the, to the, to the, uh, concert and community stage. Um, so that's really important for us to be in compliance with that. Um, and then, uh, uh, the next item is enhanced job site safety. Um, uh, job site training and purchase of high-vis equipment for our employees. And, uh, this involves new, uh, safety gear and helmet, helmets for those in the field to protect our employees, also new, uh, critical safety training in the right of way. So again, a, a theme of, of, uh, safety for our employees, training for our employees, to keep them safe, keep our residents safe, keep our infrastructure safe. Um, so those are all, all initiatives and existing programs to, to highlight those efforts, and to prevent injuries. Um, so that's to kick off, uh, this part of the, uh, public works budget, and, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Lexi, unless there are any questions on those, those items. Okay.
Okay, so, um, for the public works budget, um, again, we have the two years of actual, the current year budget, current year forecast, and then next year budget. As you can see, um, we are, um, total current budget for this year was one point five million, about one point five million. We're gonna spend a little under that, about one point four eight million this year, and we're gonna budget a little bit over that amount, about one point five one two next year. So, um, we weren't able to do all the things we wanted to do in, in this current fiscal year, but, um, some things had to get pushed, so. Um, one of the things I wanted to note is personnel has not changed, the number of personnel has not changed from this year to next year. Oh, and with the fifteen point seven five, as a reminder, uh, Brian Herr, our building official, is also twenty-five percent of his time is charged to the fire department as the fire marshal, so. That's why he's only point seven five percent public work. He is a full person. Um, so again, um, this is our salaries estimates for this next fiscal year. Um, we do, this includes just our regular steps that we have for all important new employees until they get to the, um, salary max. Um, the only things that are not included in here are, are insurance increases, which we have not received yet, um, but will be part of the consolidated budget, as well as any kind of a cost of living increase, or merit increase, or anything of that nature. So that would all be contemplated within the consolidated budget. Um, so one thing I wanted to note, um, under regular salaries, as you can see, our salaries are down, um, um, and we, lower than what we had budgeted. We have been down a, a whole employee all year, and partial employee part of the year. Um, so that has, um, really affected our revenue, which is also kind of affect, or affected our salaries, which has also affected our ability to be able to complete some of the projects, um, in the way that the public works department who wanted to do. Um. Um, all the rest of this, the overtime is gonna be a little bit over budget, and some of that is because we are short-staffed, and we're trying to do as much as we can, um, ourselves, but it's not a significant amount. Um, and, um, again, like I said, the insurance will be adjusted, uh, when we find out what the insurance increase is going to be. Um, and then, um, everything else is pretty much the same. The pension contribution is based off of the salaries, but part of it is in part, so that's why it seems bigger. Um. I think that helps if I actually use my notes instead of, with them. So. So when we get into materials and supplies, we're, we're pretty much, we're low, we're pretty much keeping everything pretty much stable, pretty much the same, slight increases or decreases based on actual usage. Um, some things we did determine when Anthony and I were going through his budgets, that some things weren't coded correctly and put in the right account. So we've made some adjustments, so, um, you know, some, some of those things have come through. Um, but one of the big things that I did want to point out in this budget is the, uh, repair and maintenance. Um, but one of the big things that I did want to point out in this budget is the uh, repair and maintenance. Um, which is right here. We're estimating spending about forty three thousand two hundred dollars this year in repairs and maintenance supplies. That has been moved to the capital budget. So that's why his budget is zero this year. And then the capital budget was reflected in. So it's going to make sure that that was noted. Um, another item that was a little bit higher is. Um, the concrete materials and asphalt, asphalt materials, um, both just about doubled, went from fifty five hundred to ten thousand and five thousand to eleven thousand. Uh, and that's due to increase in the materials. So I mean, just. Gas and petroleum increase alone affects the asphalt cost and concrete cost kind of goes up with it. So. Unfortunately, it's just costing us more to take care of some of those projects. Um, on the next page. Um, again, um, with the care and subsistence, uh, as I noted with the fire department, um, we generally do a gift card to staff. We're not going to be doing that next year, which is why there is that, that difference of only six hundred dollars for care and subsistence for next year as opposed to. Um, a larger number. And as with the fire department and with all the other departments, um, as I had said, Tanya had done the deep dive into all the utilities to make sure everybody was feeling, being billed correctly. Which kind of shows why we have this, we kind of thought we should have been at seventy three hundred, but that was because of the way the bills were coming in. We have corrected it. Um, so electric is going to be lower, but gas is going to be higher. Um, it's just, it's kind of, I know it looks kind of funky, but it should be good going forward. Fingers crossed. So, um, and everybody will only be charged for their stuff and. Not other departments. Um. Another item that we have was. Down here in rentals, we went from fifty seven hundred dollars to three hundred fifty dollars. We moved a large portion of those expenses over to capital. Because we were able to, to take some of that pressure off of the general fund. Um. As a reminder, we aren't able to dip into general fund reserves, so um, a lot of the public work stuff could be paid out of either or. So we've moved them to general fund or to the capital fund. Um. Great. Um, another item I wanted to point out is the training. We're only agreeing to spend about nine hundred dollars in training this fiscal year, but next fiscal year we have five thousand seven hundred dollars budgeted for training. And that is for the CDL class A, which was one of the strategic priorities. Uh, and so it's the training for that. Um, and then another item that relates to the strategic priorities that is an increase is under uniforms. For anticipating spending about twenty three thousand five hundred dollars next year, and that's for the high vis um, uniforms and helmets and stuff for their safety out on the. Street or in community when they're working. Excuse me. Yes, we. Pardon me, the high vis uniforms, is that for public works or is that like throughout, is that like police, fire, public works? Okay, okay.
Sort of thinking I'm sure they throw the vest on. Which we historically reviewed, but didn't know it'd go on. So we potentially, we're going to turn all the hoodies, um. Sweatshirts, their, their shirts are already high vis, but we're going to basically any type of clothing, even their work clothes is going to have the uh, reflective properties. So they'll always be compliant.
Um, and then other than that, that was really all I had is that were really differences. We don't have any capital outlay for public works and public works budget. So. Um, those are really the only changes that we had for public works for this next fiscal year. Are there any questions? Okay.
So. Can you tell me what?
Yeah. It's a potential rack. Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go to the capital. Um, improvement strategic priorities. And if you can enhance that.
I'm going to look at the next three.
That's okay. Okay, so. Again, starting off with some existing pro, uh, projects and programs. We've been doing this uh, um. This isn't the first year we've done this, but we've been doing this for a couple of years now, uh, adding, uh, added capital development funds to the sewer lateral program. Um, and this helps avoid wait lists. Uh, advances customer focus and community wellbeing. This has allowed us to get our list down to a very manageable. Just a handful. I think we have one or two on the waitlist right now. Um, so it's been a tremendous effort to. From a customer service standpoint, for our sewer lateral program. Uh, next item is uh. Uh, implementation of our business license module. And um, this advances a number of strategies from customer service to internal. Process, technology and training and economic stability. And this is really helping our city clerk. Um, with uh. Uh, the business license software program. This will allow her to charge appropriate fees, issue late, late notices. Uh, billing purposes, it really serves as the entire infrastructure. And our present system is outdated, needs to be phased out. The new system will be much more efficient, effective and user friendly for both staff and customers. So we're very excited to um. Um, to move forward with this, um, continuing to move forward with that. And um, finally, we've been working for uh. The last year plus on our city hall renovations. Last couple of years and um, continue conversion of the old firehouse space. This advances internal process focus and employee focus. We've made a lot of progress with the renovations for all of our employees over the last year. We have a new workout room. Which is very exciting for employees to use. For police, over the last couple of months, we have new space uh, for our uh, police employees. The new locker room is taking shape and uh, uh, restrooms and changing areas are nearing completion. Um, so there's been a lot of progress there. In the coming months, we're going to finish the interior stairwell. And then the um, reconstruct the kitchen. So that will be coming in, uh, and that will be advancing in the coming months. So those are all existing projects and programs. And then from a new initiative standpoint. Uh, implementing the office three sixty for employees. Uh, an internal process and technology and training focus. This uh, really provides uh, additional levels of security that are needed and, and backup to our in, information system is more secure. Implement our traffic calming measures. Uh, really a community wellbeing focus. And let me talk about this for a moment. Um, we're anxious, anxiously awaiting our traffic study and we will arrange for a council presentation on this in the very near future. Um, we know that we're going to have priority streets. So the real thing is, once we get it, what do we do with it? And we want to implement it. And it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, a several year implementation. But we know we're going to have priority streets that need attention. And you'll see later on, uh, when Lexi goes through it, that um. Um, we've set aside some money. And we plan on addressing at least one tier, tier one street. Uh, tier one is in the highest tier of priority. And um, we estimate that, that um, that's going to cost approximately thirty two thousand dollars. So we want to address that with appropriate either speed humps or speed bumps, depending on what the consultant tells us. Um, so um. Um, that's, that's the plan. And so we'll obviously have more to, to, to talk about once the traffic study is done and how we're going to implement it. But we want to set aside money now. Um, even though the traffic study is not, not totally complete. Um, and I really hope to uh, set aside a lot more money in future years. What we're dealing, I, I will talk about in a moment, how tight our capital budget is. I want to address that in just a moment, because we have a very tight capital budget. Finally, uh, uh, selecting the consultant for the ADA study. Um, we're going to do this in the spring of twenty twenty four. And the reason we're doing that is just because. Uh, money. We, we can't afford to do it, to do it sooner. Um, this is going to be an expensive endeavor. And um, we're going to do it in the spring of twenty twenty four and then look to implement it. Really look to implement it the following fiscal year. Uh, this is a community wellbeing focus. Um, and this is going to be a cost sharing effort for eighty percent in capital and twenty percent is in parks. So you'll see the breakdown, uh, as Lexi goes through it. In the meantime, I want to be clear on this because Councilman Philip brought this up at our previous meeting. All of our sidewalks are being constructed to AD estimates. So I wanted to be real clear about that. So, those are the existing and, and new initiatives. Um. The reason, what I did want to address be, be, before I see if there's any questions, is. The public works capital improvement budget is extremely tight and, and we have depleted our um, capital improve, improvement fund balance. And I want to give. Four specific reasons as to why this is the case. First of all, construction costs have doubled with our street and sidewalk projects. Number one. Number two. Improvements made to the Maplewood Public Library as part of our commitment. Uh, that was, we all made that a priority. Uh, they were very expensive, nearly three hundred thousand dollars. Um, number three. The Manchester Road overlay project uh, was over budget by nearly one million dollars. And that's because we based our construction costs on twenty eighteen estimates. And we had to do that because that's when we submitted for the federal grant. And obviously things changed dramatically over the last several years. So um, that came in, you know, over budget and, and really beyond our control. And then finally, as Lexi's already indicated, we've moved several, to, to, to make sure our general fund, and we're okay on the general fund side. We've moved several things from the public works general fund budget to the capital improvements budget. Things like IT equipment, uh, repairs and maintenance and other items. So that's why our capital improvements budget, and there are other, other reasons as well. Things are, things are tight. Um, and, and so that's why you have us, we'd like to do the ADA thing sooner, but we really just can't afford it. And we'd like to set aside more money to implement the traffic study, but we got to ease into it. But. So any questions that I, I right now? Okay, Lexi?
Okay. Um, so again, oh, this is. We've done a little bit more. Um, for the capital budget, um, again, we do have um. Two years of actual budget numbers and actual expenses, current year budget, current year forecast, next year budget. As you can see, this current year budget is budgeted at four point three million dollars. We're going to spend about four point two million dollars, so really close to. Um, what we budgeted. Um, but next year, we are only budgeting one point eight million dollars um, to spend. Because we are, we just don't have the money to do. Uh, some of the things that we've done the last several years. And as you can see, even in this year, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, we spent three point one million dollars. We don't collect that much in, in capital sales staff. So we've been dipping into our reserves for the last several years. Um, and we've had big projects we've been working on, but so it, which explains why we, why we're in this situation, but that is why we never hear. So let me get into. Okay. So there are no um, salaries that are charged to the capital budget. So um, we don't have to discuss that one at all. Um, for the most part, most of our um. Items in capital really aren't changing a whole lot. Um. A, as you can see, you know, there's, it's nominal increases or decreases, just depending on kind of usage, but really nothing in. The materials and supplies that really is changing in any significant way. Um, the same holds true, excuse me, for. Um, a lot of our other services. Um, one thing I did want to note is we are going up to two hundred thousand dollars. In our IT support services for next fiscal year. Um, our IT department is really good. Um, and they do a lot of things for us and, and they really made things a lot better. Um, but it is a big chunk of our annual, of our annual budget and capital improvement every year. So.
That's the entire, that's all department.
Um, and then for repairs and maintenance, as we had discussed, we had moved that to capital. So that's what, this is going up to forty five thousand dollars. Uh, we aren't going to have any of those expenses in public works. Um, and then vehicle repairs, we are estimating about twenty eight thousand dollars in vehicle repairs for next fiscal year. Um, I, I do know that we have at least one vehicle that is in need of a new replacement. Um, that we aren't budgeting to replace at this time. So we're going to try to limp that one along for a while. So. Um, we are budgeting for some, some significant vehicle repairs, um, just because of the age of our vehicles. Um. And then the next item, or really the big item with capital is um, both capital outlay and then the capital project special, or capital improvement special project. So for capital outlay, next fiscal year, we're estimating spending about two hundred seventy seven thousand three hundred dollars. And those expenses are detailed here in the second page, and some of them are kind of our standard. We try to budget some money every year for computer equipment for replacement. We have the um, street sweeper payment that we need to make every fiscal year. Um, but one thing that I did want to note, um, we do have this large gas. Paint and aerosol chemical cabinets. Um, that is twenty five hundred dollars that is budgeted both within capital and parks department. And um, that is for insurance. We're required to keep those kind of under a lock and key. Um, so we are going to implement that for safety for our staff and, and just in general safety. Um, one of the other items is, you may have noticed there's both the one and a half ton truck and a two ton dump truck. Um, and we are, we would like to buy a one and a half ton dump truck. And um, that's really kind of the vehicle we'd like to get. Unfortunately, they are not available on state contract. So uh, we may actually have to buy a two ton dump truck. Um, so we did budget for the two done, two ton dump truck. But we are estimating that, um, but we're, if we can, we will get the one and a half ton. So it may be less than that, but we, we wanted to make sure we had enough money. Because we do need a new dump, dump truck no matter what. Um. I did also want to note that, um, if you look here, we have the garage door opener with the garage door mechanical opener, the shop window replacements. Shop, office, kitchen furniture, all of those are being budgeted at fifty percent out of capital and the other fifty percent will be budgeted out of. The parks department. That's for all um, improvements down at the public works um, office. And since that manages both public works and capital, we're able to, to use money, funds from both. Um, we did have to replace our traffic counters uh, next year. Um, both of our traffic counters um, were severely damaged. Um, and then, yes. Um, then the uh, citywide ADA study, as, as a city manager mentioned, in the strategic priorities. Four thousand dollars will be spent, which is eighty percent of the cost of our anticipating spending on the um. ADA to select the ADA consultant in this fiscal year. Um, twenty percent of it. Will be budgeted within the parks department for this consultant. Um, we also have this. Um, roof, uh, roof minor structural repairs for the salt, mulch and rock bins. We are going to charge some of that to public works because it does. Contain some of our stuff, items for parks. Um, so that's why we have that's. Um, spread out between the two. Um, and then another strategic priority was the traffic study implementation. We are budgeting thirty two thousand dollars for speed bumps slash humps for whatever the traffic study says we need to do with our high priority streets. Um, and then we are still replay, put budgeting for a replacement. Uh, HVAC unit, it's still running, so. We're going to hope it makes it one more year, but it, it's still going. Um, and then when we get into this is where we really have, this is, I guess, kind of the, I mean, if you will, of the budget. Um, we are, um, as you can see, we're only budgeting seventy eight thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars for city hall improvements. That is our um, our energy savings payment that we have to make. Um, and then just a little bit of money for any small improvements, but. The city's portion of improvements for. Um, within city hall are completed. We still have some uh, police department, public, uh, police department improvements. That the police department will be funding, but the capital part is, is for the city is gone. Um, next year for street construction, we are estimating, are budgeting eight hundred fifty one thousand four hundred dollars. Um, this year we did. We're, we're estimating that we will finish um, about one point two million dollars in streets. Unfortunately. Next year, that's going to be streets and sidewalks, and I believe it's heavy on sidewalks. Correct? Okay. Um, as we have done in years past, we are still budgeting some money, only five thousand dollars towards sewer lateral expenses. In case sewer lateral fund is unable to meet all of its obligation. So we are budgeting some money there. Um, as you can also note, and for twenty three, twenty four, we um, are not anticipating having any expenses for the Manchester Phase Four. That project should be complete, completed to here. I think it's basically done, so um, I think I just have to get the bills and then it'll be completed. Um, so that'll be taken care of. Um, we do have two other items. We have the Greenwood STP grant project, which is this um. The, which is the same grant program that we used for the Manchester Phase Four. Um, we are just applying for, this is just the beginning stages of it. Um, we are just applying for, this is just the beginning stages of it, we anticipate this um streaking, the street project being completed in fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, so you'll see this for the next couple of years. Um, and then we also are budgeting three hundred forty thousand dollars for the Greenwood Railroad Crossing. Um, and so to be able to maintain our quiet zone designation, we need special, our our special gates at the um railroad crossing and uh we anticipate that those will come in next year. Um, it'll it'll be closed, but we're waiting on the railroad to let us, give us the information so we can move forward. So it's a, it's a process to be able to get that designation and get the engineering and everything created for those gates. Yes.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Anthony, forgive me, that just um and if you went over this, please forgive me. But that reminds me of the, oh, gosh, what was the, what's the trail they're supposed to be going through? Yes, the Greenway. Um, I understood that we had to do, we had to pay for some work to be done around that area. Did you go over that or is that a part of this budget? Anthony, you know what I'm talking about?
Well, um, there's there's two things going on again, like first of all, we've been waiting this for four years. It's just gone really slow and rewind, they said they we just we gave seventy thousand and they were going to be the engineering and design work. The council approved something, and then they came back and said, we want you to do the design work and then give it to us. We've been doing that, we're about sixty percent complete on our plans for that process. That's going to tie into the project you were asking about, which is the reconstruction of Greenwood, we're going to do that currently with GRG, we have an S T P grant, service grant application grant for that, which is where you see thirty six thousand, that's the preliminary engineering, that's some of the environmental assessments, things like that, we're starting the preliminary work. Simultaneously, GRG has got C Mac, uh which is like congestion mitigation act uh uh grant, and that's going to be, we're going to build that together. We we just met with GRG and I know you're going to probably laugh about this because I kept, I was always talking about South Side makes more sense. Not North Side by that way, I was very nervous about having a Greenway crossing for people coming down south on Sunday and the the drop of topography just a little on the road, I was afraid someone was going to get hit there. I also didn't like the fact that it was on the north side, you're cut across that Canterbury as you're coming down Marshall, you go under the railroad overpass, the harbor, and you come flying out of there, there was going to be another cross. Well, I met last Thursday with GRG, they got a new engineer, and they hired a new company, and the first thing they said is why are we doing this on the north side? Why aren't we doing this on the south side? The GRG put a tremendous amount of effort reaching out to people on the north side. But their new consultant felt strongly enough that we now convinced them to go to the south side. So I have a memo that I can forward to council. Um, I didn't want anyone, and I asked Michael, can I brief the council, can I, you may get a call, and I didn't want you to say, no, no, it's going on the north side, I'm sure. But the main thing they found, they found is that the consultant was worried about um obviously safety, like we mentioned. But they would have had to get right away from the railroad to do the north side. Or whatever that, that, and that's the point, that's basically what killed it, their initial plans, the prior engineer basically went on curb lines, when they started getting into a little bit more, they realized in some cases they're going to need eighteen inches or even more to get it on a road again. Good luck with that, that would have pushed this off so bad, they could have never met their deadline. But in in in, the positive is there, so those two conflict points are are gone. The negative is they're going to have to go on the south side and they're going to be going across driveways and they're going to be going across busy roads like St. Elmo and but again, that's people are going at high rates of speed there, even though there's going to be more conflict point in the south, they're not going to be as dangerous. Um, but they have to revisit their outreach and they're going to be doing that probably in the next few weeks. Just so um no one's surprised when that comes, I believe they would be coming back to the council then. They didn't want to come to the council first without talking to the people first. But they didn't want you to be surprised, so I said, I'm going to be meeting with them anyway, I'll convey this message, just so we're not surprised here. So I I I envision GRD will come back again with new plans showing the south. Um, and one of the nice things about the south is a lot of the businesses were concerned that it was going to be, it was going to be a very narrow road. But by going on the south, there's already a five foot wide sidewalk there, so we basically gained five feet. They get full ten foot trailer line, they can add additional eighteen, either twelve or eighteen inches within the roadway systems. They don't have to touch the railroad and they can have a better separation between Greenwood itself and the trail on the south side. It'll also allow us, everyone knows the Foley's intersection, we have the parallel sidewalks, we'll be able to elevate that, bring that up, so it'll be one big wide sidewalk, we can also have some creations out there, like some benching, we can make that part of process if they decide they're going to be out or receiving. We hope it's going to be a positive, there's no doubt that somebody probably will say, I would rather have it on the other side of the road. That that's possible, but GRD not for this, I'll have Michael forward this to you um tomorrow, you read the memo, it's they're pretty, going to be pretty clear why they're making this change.
Thank you.
And that's maybe the summer of twenty twenty five that this construction is happening. GRD has already indicated they they will turn all construction management over to the city, so they'll be able to monitor the construction of the trail and will simultaneously. And if the resident has a problem, they're not going to go to GRG in the city, we're not going to do this, they'll come to the city and will be responsible, and I would rather honestly have it that. There's no, they're not taking any sidewalk differences. You know, to do. No, in fact, we would have needed to take right away on the north side, that was the problem, and they might have even had to try to take some on the south side to make up some of the difference on the north side. So I'll use Marshalls, for example, they're going to have to go eight minutes on the actual property, which is basically their parking lot. The cost that goes to arbitration was just then astronomical, and basically they need parking away from a business, it's just, you go to four on that year, they're going to pay a large sum, so they would have had to ship the project southward to avoid the railroad, then they would have had to take property from residents on the south side, but I just avoid it.
I know, I already heard it. Yeah, a very long project. Okay.
And those are all of the um changes or or items of note, I guess, for the capital budget, are there any other questions?
I would need for you all to excuse me for a moment, I need to.
No, thanks for. Only in one street compared with that two here, but. We'd already, we'd already based on the fifth and third, right? We were an allocated bunch to sidewalks, we mentioned these sidewalks are hated, it's like every sidewalk we've done with for the last several decades, we don't do anything that is not hated, right? Good way to put that, I guess, just make sure there's no question about that.
Yeah, I like my side of it, my side of it. What happened? We said you never draft, so it's going to be a small part.
Well, the interesting thing is we've been telling those people on separate flights, whenever the road stops, amended and stopped, I mean, we feel safe to build a road over the top, we're going to do it, unfortunately. Just happen to get time when we have a lot of sidewalks already programmed and construction cost, you know. There's there's might be a year where you might try to typically build a fund out and and both at the construction cost level off a little bit there. Um, but those people probably wait six, seven years, and they're gone now, but that's them and we're.
Not even a part being reconstructed, not irritated by it, so.
Bad. It is, we we got another American in there beforehand and we got all the utilities.
Yeah, it's all trying to be done now, right? Sewers happen, waters happen, gases happen, very good, sir.
And inevitably, somebody service line. You know, I, we're just happy, that was a big, good, good organization, um. To give you an idea, they, they had it on a list. And then we got ready to go and wrote this back and bid it out and they then also their list changed because of other breaks.
Hmm.
We just, you know, we've had guys with that work, look, they did it bad enough last year, let's let's put it on this year so we don't have to, you know, you don't have to come later, it's cheaper for everybody, the back pay is better for them. It's tough when you're doing the road and it's going up immediately.
Do we have a way, is there, so you know, they've done the sort of fix on the where they buried the main, it ain't great, that's something that we'll look at later.
Yeah, we're going to go, so, no, it's just temporary.
I don't need the part of reconstructing, I'm I'm past that, I'm past losing terrorists down, we're building. So we have a lot that's not going to.
But they're probably just allowing to settle out or probably open them later, usually they wait several weeks to allow for some of them before they come and put their finish. Uh, finishing, 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 if it's not, then we'll make them rip it out, we do it.
My neighbor in Subaru, we're all next to struggle.
Yeah, no, there's no doubt that waterline, they just did that they're, yeah, that's the way they did on settlement before they go to finish layer.
Okay, we're going to proceed to parks and stormwater. That's okay.
Mm-hmm.
And uh quickly run through strategic priorities, so the first one is uh all these are in parks, I believe, so finalize the renovation of Central Park. Central Park, um advancing community well-being focus, the entire park is getting revamped with a brand new um play structure, new benches and uh new picnic tables, so very excited um to complete that. Um, we are very close to finalizing the Parks Master Plan, we're working with the consultant and the Parks Commission to finalize it. Um, we received a lot of great public input along the way. Council members will get uh before it's public, you'll get some uh an email from me, uh 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 an early preview of that um before it's before it's, you know, goes out publicly and all that, and um we can talk more about how to wear that out properly, yes.
Do you have an, I I guess, um what what's left to finalize on the master plan because to some members of the Parks and Rec Commission, they think it's done, so what's left?
Yeah, so um we 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 got the plan back from the consultants and we made, we, I say we uh uh myself, Tiffany and Anthony, and we made a couple of suggestions, most of them are like cleanup, no big deal. And um I think it was supposed to go back to the Parks Board just to, just to see if 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 um they were okay with those editor changes, and so I think it's just minor cleanup. Um, nothing major, and so this should be a matter of and I think Tiffany was going to be meeting with the consultant any day now, so this should be just cleanup and a matter of getting it out, but I do want, I do want counsel before it becomes public, I do want you all to take a look at it. And um give you like a week or so or ten days to digest it before we go public with it. See if you have any instructions and things like that, if that makes sense. But I'll talk with Tiffany uh tomorrow and and if any of that's, uh if there's any other information, I'll be sure to let you know. Okay. Okay, um. As far as new initiatives, we're very excited with the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center, having a resident weekend uh community well-being focus, and this is, uh we're targeting the end of May or the first weekend in June. This is the the weekend prior to the pool really opening, and we're letting Maplewood resident can come for free. Um, and something that uh we're excited about, and this is also kind of uh also really fulfilling a um part of Welcome Maplewood, which is our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging initiative. So we're excited about doing that for for all of our uh all of our residents. Uh, the next one is our Parks Passport Program, again, community well-being focus. Our Parks Board has been um working with Tiffany on this, uh really getting kids out and about in our parks in places like our library, uh with fun and creative activities. So that's been um been a pretty good success, you might have seen the social media activity and and um uh other activity on that in our community.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Just a comment on that, so I've had, uh I've had some folks that have ac- actually participated in it, say that it's not well advertised.
Okay.
So can we, can we work on that? And if you all need funding for that, can we talk about that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, we talked about the uh ADA consultant study, again, this is spring of twenty twenty four, this is just the park share um twenty percent, uh which I think is uh a thousand dollars or something very minimal, Lexi will highlight it in in just a moment, okay? Thank you, and um and then finally is implementation of our Parks Master Plan. Again, we won't, well, we don't know what what uh project we're talking about, but we thought it made sense to set aside a hundred thousand dollars, so that's what we're doing to begin implementation of the plan. Uh, we're working with the Parks Board to come up with something um uh to implement the plan. And we also, in doing so, we want to look at grant funding. Um, uh because there might be a case where with one park and implementing some of this, we want to use grant funding instead, or we might want to leverage some of the dollars for grant funding because a lot of cases, we've been doing grant funding for some of these projects. So we're not, we're going to be, try to be very strategic with how we implement the Parks Plan, that Master Plan, and this is going to be a multi-year effort. You know, ten-year lease efforts and to implement this plan, but it's obviously very exciting um with uh our nine or ten parks that we have, how many do we officially say we have? Parks?
Yeah, ten.
Ten. We count, we count back here.
Yeah, so yeah, we may not, we've got other smaller ones. Depending what you, whether you count the skate park, it was separate one or not, you know, I mean, depending what people count, I would count skate park as a part. Some people don't.
I don't.
Um, it's not amazing, come on.
All right.
No, don't get me wrong, it's necessary. It's necessary, it's necessary, but when I, just moving, like, I guess, old fashioned, I, when I think of park, I think there's like grass there, so that's why. Yeah, no, the skate park is necessary, so I don't want anyone saying I said otherwise, okay?
That's unreporting.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, if no questions, we'll go to um the budget presentation by Lexi.
Okay, so um just as a refresher, uh.
Saying that it's difficult for me, but yeah, thank you.
No, I, as I guess, well, I'm like, wow, it's small for me, I'm here, it's got to be small for you all. Um, so for the Parks Budget, um we have several different state, we have the pool bonds, we have uh park, you know, uh park maintenance, we have the actual pool operations, and then we have capital. So there's four separate sections within the pool bu- within the pool budget, so uh are the park budget, I'm sorry, so this kind of culminates everything together, so um um so again, we have the two years actual current year budget, next year for this year forecast, next year budget. Um, as you can see, we have a lot of things that we aren't able to get com- completed this year that we had budgeted. Uh, and and a lot of that has to do with our our staffing situation. Um, we had hoped to be able to do a lot of different things in-house. Um, and unfortunately, with with being short employees, we don't have the ability to do a lot of the things that we had hoped we'd be able to do. So um some of them had to get perspective the next year. Um, and I'll go through those more in detail. Um, the only staff, the only staff that is truly just parks, um is our part-time staff, we have one and a half part-time employees in staff. Um, and those are just the part-time employees that we hire every year. Um, so the first division of parks is park pool bonds. Um, we have paid off the pool bonds, the last payment was made this year, twenty twenty one. Um, so this will be the last year that the pool bonds will be part of this budget because there are no expenses, there are no revenues. It is strictly just because we still have actual expenses, we do need to show it as part of our budget. Um, so all of the following pages are really of no consequence. So then we get into um Division two hundred, I guess, which is the parks maintenance. So, um, and so this, you can see, we have, again, this is summary of just parks maintenance costs. We had budgeted one point one million dollars in um parks maintenance. We're going to spend just under what we budgeted this fiscal year, we're going to spend just a little bit less next year. So we're going to go from about one point one nine eight to one point one six oh to one point one five oh, so. Um, and then the detail for that, oh, um, for this I did want to note that again, it I did wanna note that, again, it does show that we have um portion of our full-time salaries from Public Works. Um, and we have some, um, one in, in a part-time, so it'd be one and a half. Uh. Uh, some are part-time workers, um, that we, that we try to hire every year. Um, these again are the salaries for. Um, the parks budget. You will notice that the building official and the building inspector and the building inspector are not part of this, because. Nothing that they do relates to parks, so they're not, they're part of the public works budget, but not part of this. Um, again, this does not show any cost of living or merit increase, nor does it show any kind of insurance increase, which will all be dealt with in the consolidated budget. So.
Let's go on.
Sorry? Mm-hmm. Okay. So, looking at the budget, um, you will notice again that um revenue, that regular salaries are lower. Um, again, that is because of staffing. We do not have full-time full staff, um, and we didn't have all of the. Uh, part-time employees that we would have liked to have had for the entirety, for the entire D of summer, so. Um, that kind of affected our overall, um. Salaries for the year. Um, again, we are budgeting the three hundred forty thousand dollars for next year for. Um, for parks salaries. Uh, for the full-time employees. So we should be spending about four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in salaries, which would be. Um, all the salaries will be paid in general fund, and then there will be a transfer from parks fund to the, or from general, the expense will be cha- charged to parks. And so that's how that will be relieved from general fund. Um. Most of these materials and supplies stays pretty much um static. There isn't a lot of change in them. Um, one thing I did wanna note is we are adding one thousand nine hundred dollars for small tools and equipment. Um, to the park maintenance and for just various parks, uh, maintenance tools. Um, on the next page. We have, um, you may know, so we budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars for bus service. We don't, uh, don't have any expenses here, but we are budgeting another one thousand two hundred and fifty next year. Um, we have a bus that we bought with a federal grant. Um, it is very old, it um. Doesn't always run real well, um, and it requires a lot of maintenance, so. Um, we budget money in case we need to run a bus. Or if we, if there's a major repair and we aren't able to, we're gonna spend the money on that bus, that we can run a bus to provide the bus service that we need. Um, we haven't had to use it this year. We're hoping that we won't have to next year. Um, and there's a reason for that, and I will get to that a little bit later. Um, you may know, so we added two thousand dollars under care assistance. Um, that is for the. Parks Passport Program. It's for um items for that as well as the Tons of Transportation Program. I have no idea what that is. If you have questions about the tons of transportation, you can use your main.
Basically putting trucks and. Any kind of heavy equipment out for kids to come by, twelve ton truck. Providing a police car, the modern fire, fire truck down there, it's just a deadlift. Flying and uh. Yeah, you do that over by uh, your side of your green. Yeah, we're gonna do it, bring it back. It's very. And get a lot of really, oh, yeah, I do really like that. It's a very simple thing to do.
I will say, if you ever choose to play with the mini excavator, I am. I, we went and saw it at the garage. It was very cool. I was like.
Next to this gas line.
But I mean, it's so cute, cause it's like one of those big, like, diggy guys, only it's tiny. It's adorable. It's the cutest thing. So, um, yeah, it's very fun. Oh, okay, sorry, I digress. Um.
I just haven't seen, they let you out of there.
No, no, I was for a minute, like.
We had fun. We were down there for getting stuff together for the shred event in, um, all of the, all of our old stuff that we had stored down there in, in Tanya, and I saw it, and we were both like, ooh, I want one. I don't even have a backyard, but I want one. Okay.
One year they got the county helicopter. Ooh. I would forget, cause every kid was having fun. They were loving it. All of this county helicopter going through. It, it just swarmed the helicopter. I didn't care about any of the other stuff. Helicopter came down and landed. The kids went over there. But it's a really neat event. It's reasonable, and it's good PR, not just for the public works department, but for the fire as well.
Okay, all right. So back to unfund budget. Um, the next items are, again, are the electrical, gas, water, and sewer. Um, like I said, we've made the adjustments, uh, so that way they will be more reflective, less you of, um, what they actually should be going forward, so. Um, and these weren't off real bad. There's just a little bit of tweaking that we needed to do. Um. Ooh. No.
That'd work a lot, I can't even. They're not students. I don't know if they have any.
That's really better.
Be good to skip that.
All right.
Yeah, they were learning, you know? Oh, that one's better, I think. Oh.
Goodness, that was great.
I was really worried. I wondered if we probably. Read that it's. Right? Yeah, yeah, I roll. It's probably, uh, nine years old or less. Yeah, I think. Right, I think I guarantee you, you say, it's probably about fourteen, about fourteen years old. At this year.
Okay. Sorry, I apologize. So, um, I didn't realize that that one was.
Second, I don't know, that one right there is not great, but it's definitely better.
Um. Okay, so. Um, you will notice that we are spending sixty-seven thousand dollars this year in professional services and only ten thousand. Next year, that is because the master plant, parks master plan will be complete, so, um, we won't have those expenses going forward. Um, for park expenses. Um, our park expense contract with Richmond Heights is two hundred ninety thousand dollars. Um, I think this three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars was an anomaly, I think. Some, for some reason, we didn't get billed or something, and we paid it twice in one year, which kind of. Kind of made everybody, when I looked at it, I was like, maybe it should be four hundred, and we just haven't gotten a bill, but it actually is two hundred ninety thousand dollars. So. That is what we spent this year. That is what we're going to budget next year. So. Um, I know that that was something that we didn't change last year. Um. Um, repairs and maintenance, um, we are, we only, are only spending twenty-seven thousand dollars this year. We're. Planning on spending fifty-nine thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance, and some of that is, um, just things that we haven't been able to get to again this year. Um. Um, grass cutting. Um, if you notice it, it, it's ninety thousand dollars for grass cleaning. Um. And for some reason, we only budgeted thirty-two, and I cannot tell you why, we only budgeted thirty-two last year. Um, but I do know that we had a previous contract, and now we have a new contractor for grass cleaning, correct, Anthony? So, um, this is the new number with the contract, as is the ninety-five thousand with the new contract that we just got. So. Um, that was kind of an oddity there. Um, and then weed tree, weed tree trimming, um, that is the same sort of scenario, Anthony?
Yeah, uh, we pretty good. Really depend a lot on whether we have a bigger, but uh, that apple fluctuating based on whether we got fast or. Yeah.
Um, okay, and then. Then the last item is the capital outlay. We are, um, budgeting spend sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in capital outlay in parks maintenance, in the parks and recreation department. And that is because. If I come down here. The very end, we would like to buy out the federal share of the park bus that doesn't really run, so that way we can get rid of it and buy a new bus eventually at some point. Currently, the, the, we cannot get rid of that bus. We can't sell it. We can't trade it in. Until we have bought out the federal share. So that is something that we're asking to budget for this next fiscal year, so that way we can go ahead and. Um, have that opportunity, should we, should we be able to afford to do so. And that is the only, um, capital item in that budget. Um, I guess I should have asked in between each one, were there any questions? Okay, okay, sorry. Um. So then we get into. This, ooh, sorry, much fast. This is the parks stormwater pool part of the budget. Um, and as you can see, we have no personnel services. All the lifeguards and workers at the pool are done through the park contract that we do with Richmond Heights. Um, we do have a, a slight increase here in, um. Capital outlay, and um, I will get into that a little bit later as to what we're planning on doing, why we have this special project, uh. The one ninety-nine there and the one ninety-nine there. Um. So. Um, the first one item that we have that really showed any kind of significant change, um, that is the pool chemicals. Um, we're budgeting fifty-nine thousand dollars next year. There's been a, a sharp increase in pool chemical costs. Um, so, uh, we, we are anticipating that the cost probably be at around fifty-nine thousand dollars next year, just for all the different. Um, equip, all the different chemicals that we need to maintain the pool as well as open the field. So we have some costs this year with opening, and then we'll have opening again next year. Um. Like all the other departments, the electric, gas, and water and sewer all, um. Are changing in various, varying amounts. Um, one thing I did wanna point out, if you noticed, was the water and sewer bill for this current fiscal year. It's a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars for water and a hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars for sewer. And that is because we had a, um, significant water leak, underground water leak. That we weren't aware of until we got the bill, and then we had to then have it fixed. So, um, that is why there's that anomaly for this current fiscal year. Um, but we have gotten it fixed, so the number should go back down to, um, the more reasonable thirty-five thousand, forty thousand for water.
Very interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering at the back row, and it was, uh, the gusher going and revealing that one of our salts. And it was just right, straight into the sewer, we had no idea, it was very, it was down the wall.
Yeah.
The valve that was left, that, that exposed the flaps, it never closed. That caused us to, you know, cause the community statewide, or whatever, the right of order. Gushing. Then we got that bill, so. Apparently, trying to figure out what's coming.
Um, and then finally, we have a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in capital outlay that we were going to be requesting for, um, the pool. Most of these items are pretty much, um. Kind of things we do every year. Um, we are requesting to get two new picnic tables, um, for the concession and two new water bottle fillers. Um, one of the items is twenty-five thousand dollars for a valve replacement and, um, and other upgrades, and that is for the back, back of the system.
They look okay, and they don't look okay, you're not gonna.
Yes. Um, we'd also like to spend about twenty-two hundred dollars for credit card reader replacements. Um, as well as, um. Um, the nineteen thousand dollars for the camera system is just to update the current camera system that we have there. Um, and we were waiting on the police, um. Waiting on the police camera system before we implemented that. So that's why we're moving this to, this is gonna be in next fiscal year. Um, and then the last item is this equipment house for the splash pad. And you may remember, this was in this current year budget. At like forty, forty-five thousand dollars. Um, and now it's ninety thousand. Um, we are short staffed. We were hoping to be able to get that building built this year with our staff in-house. We are, um, not as optimistic for next year, because we didn't make it again this year. So we budgeted the ninety thousand, which is what it will cost us to have someone else. Build the equipment house for the splash pad. Yes, please.
So, I'm. But I, I, um. I asked. My colleague here, and he couldn't turn and the people, what he wants to do, he's gonna scout the project. He said, very like. Yeah.
I love it for stuff to do. Um, the only thing I don't know is how family things can be. I scout those tables if you want, something. Yeah.
Absolutely, great stuff.
I.
What's with the car pressure, right? Uh, a lot of the floor, I think, is more metal, or it's coated.
Oh.
I mean, it doesn't mean to stay. They don't involve the, you know, you probably want to put like an epoxy on it. So, if it'll be wet, sitting on it. Totally. We'd be totally down with that. Yeah, there's no doubt. Any chance we can get something like that, that's fine. They could be moved to. Have something like that. We can still budget in case it doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
But, um. It's just annual, you know, we just kinda move them around as they get older, beat up, it just more, it's not like something that's dramatic, we can. Move away.
Oh, I, I'm not asking y'all to rate, I'm just. Yeah, I'm just thinking. Yeah, yeah.
We can get a, if we can get a picnic table built, um, that's fine. I think it's one of the ones we wanted, like, to maybe put an epoxy filling over it, before the, uh, for it to on wet, if not, if it's gonna be wood.
Thanks, man.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
No, that's good.
The sand muller, sand muller, it started the scout project.
Me?
Yeah. That's one of them. That's definitely. What a legend.
Um, so then that's all the stuff that we have for the pool. Are there any other questions about the pool? This is just all the detail. Um, okay, so then the last section that we have is parks capital. Um, and I do have to note that there are. I apologize, but, um. Do you notice in the budget for this fiscal year, um, I have that yellow highlighted number because that's incorrect. It was something I was. Trying to fix, um, remotely. It is this number here, this four sixty-two, three fifty-two, should have been two sixty-five, six thirty-two. Uh, which would have made the total here instead of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then there is a fifty thousand dollar capital outlay for this current fiscal year that my link did not catch, so it didn't add in there, which would make this. Two hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars, and I do apologize for that. Um. But, um, all of that being said, this is all of the capital improvements that we're planning on doing within the parks budget. There are no salaries for this, because it's strictly capital. Um, and there are no other really expenses other than capital. Um, we do have one two hundred dollar charge, and that is here for per, um, professional services. Um, but that is the only charge that we have. We aren't estimating having any for next fiscal year. Um. So we have fifty thousand dollars that we're, um, that we're planning on finishing, or spending in capital outlay for this current fiscal year. Um, for next fiscal year, for the capital outlay, we're, but would like to budget four hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars. And that detail is here. So, um, again, this is, um. The two-ton dump truck that we were talking about purchasing with capital, um, that number could go down if we are able to get the one and a half-ton dump truck. Um, you will notice that we also need a three-quarter ton pickup truck. Um, and, uh, that is the, um. Hundred percent the park share, cause that will be hundred percent used for parks. Um, so we do have both of those vehicles budgeted. We have, um, a hundred eight thousand dollar, a hundred eight thousand dollars budgeted for six foot of sidewalk on the north side of the Ryan Homer Park. Um, and then a hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars for, uh, reconstruction of the Ryan Homer in the north and south Deer Creek parking lots. Um, we have some LED lights, um, upgrades for the tennis courts. Um, we do have the one thousand dollars for the park ADA studying. That's the twenty percent that would go to the parks department. Um. We have, um, the ten thousand dollars for tree planting, which is a program this city's been doing for a long time.
May I ask about that? Anthony, this will be a question for you. So when, um, the president of the, the Park and Recreation Commission. And I attended the Arbor Day Festival, they talked about like, um, different programs where. There are trees given away for free. So when we're talking about tree planting, are we talking about buying the trees? Are we talking about the labor for planting the trees? Why is it that, that much when we have access to trees that are free?
They're referring to, it's for really. And historically, they would offer. Ten or twelve species, sometimes even up to fifteen. And they offered a much. Larger, more robust trees. Over the years, they've gone. The trees have gotten much smaller and smaller, uh, and fewer and fewer options for residents. So we've had a lot of people that have. Been complaining over the years. We've been planting smaller trees. They've been getting mowed over. Uh, they haven't survived as well. And so we had to go back out, from a staff perspective, we figured it out. Uh they haven't survived as well. And so we have to go back out to the staff perspective. We figured out the staff time by use these free trees versus just buying our own trees and planting them ourselves, uh to give residents more options. Uh number one, and number two, we believe it's gonna be a lot less uh hourly uh hours for our employees by doing that stuff. But that's why we made this change. We're gonna see if this, how this works. But if we're still going out and digging up trees that have died, or then then we can go back to the fourth, really, we can build. Really, we've had a lot of people that have been complaining about the options that have dwindled over the years. So that's why we're trying to do this, just to be able to accommodate the residents and not waste time planting and replanting it with another thing, kind of take that with the insurance staff over like the last three years. We're just trying to figure out, we, we take free up staff time.
Thank you.
Um and then these four, one, two, three, four items here, the large gas paint and aerosol chemical cabinets, the garage door, the shop office, kitchen furniture, and the minor structural repairs for the salt molds and rock bins. Um those are all items that were shared um the expense with the capital budget. Um and then finally, the pond pit and pump replacement. So it's not just the pump, it's the the pit. I know you explained this. It, it's the, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. If it, if it, that's kind of like the um the uh air conditioning, where we have, we've replaced five of seven on the same unit, we'll keep you for the other two to go. This pond pit, this pond and this bit, actually, she lasted a lot longer. We budgeted it every year, cuz based on all the other, the side on Michael's side, we seem like to replace it every two years, for whatever reason, the one on this side seems to be doing a lot better. But we just, we budgeted it every year in anticipation because we're quite frankly, level and surprise that simple would happen at the end of that.
And then.
Looking at Anthony cuz I'm like, that's Maplewood's habitat.
So next year, we're gonna put some bushes out here, and then like that.
There, where I can see them all day.
No, those ducks are, yeah, we're gonna.
If we can make a little nesting ledge outside, we'll.
We're pushing for our ducks out there. Really, I did it. Free campaign. Those ducks are, they've got a lot of personality. I did not know. They were the least city employees or anything.
Some more than others.
There was some uh, there was some mating going on today.
So I'm not, I'm just so. And all, and all, like, three males out there. I'm like, what in the world? Got a little bit of fighting going on. I've actually got a picture of them. My wife uh got a picture for uh my picture wall. John's, John's little bird is over there. I'm creating a party for the soccer fish. People have a duck mouth, so, yeah, they went out and bought the duck mouth, so.
Um okay, so we have a few more things um within the budget for this year. Next year, we have um we have a um ten thousand dollars that we have budgeted just for um Miss Lane's play, play feature replacements, just as needed, and all the different parts. We are budgeting ten thousand dollars in Deer Creek Park for play feature replacements. Um we are also budgeting two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in Central Park matching funds. We have a grant um for um for that, and so that's the matching portion of those funds uh or for that pro- for that project. Uh we also have um budgeted ten thousand dollars for shade and maybe um some synthetic grass for the skate park. If it isn't that, the for the.
Looking at the grass or the concrete. We're not exactly sure, but I put synthetic grass, uh but it may be concrete. The bottom line is the day area that we cannot get in the grass where all the kids sit uh on the wall. We're gonna also, we see wall, there were animals, and put like a shade structure there, cuz it does get really hot in summer. Maybe a little, maybe shade will make a big difference.
I'm just saying, grass there, legit park. I don't care if it's fake, okay? I was looking at you like that, like, so I was like, huh?
I like that. Good. I like that.
I'd be sure with the rest of the capital thing. For that at all? No, we don't. We don't. No, I, I. It'd be nice, but the residents, they've got to put up with it. I'd say it's, it's, it can get kind of loud there. Okay. We don't, we didn't want to burden any after uh hours, okay? And you know, we're nice.
Um there is just one other item on the, in this budget, and that's. Okay, um I promise we're close. Um it's a hundred thousand dollars, and that is for the park master plan improvements. We don't know what they are. That's what, something that City Mayor just recently mentioned, that um we were going to budget a lump sum for whatever those improvements are for whatever park, as is deemed by the master plan. And that is it for the very lengthy Parks Capital Budget. Miss along.
Thank y'all. And as always, thank, uh I, I really thank Public Works Department, Anthony, Tiffany, and all of the employees, Jason, all of his, his entire team. Y'all are awesome. It brings me joy to go to other municipalities and rub in their face. Yeah. We have the, we have the best Public Works Department. Like, I, I say that boldly and with pride, and there is someone to refute, and they don't. There you go. Yeah.
Can we call that nine and a half parks? Just split the difference.
It's only the artificial grass.
It just splits the difference.
They got a little grass on the concrete, just so I can say it apart. There's still a little grass on either side. You don't maintenance.
What if you paint it green, like grass?
I would bet that. I would be, I, I'd go.
I've said.
A grass mirror along with it.
On that part, we got absolutely our biggest bank block on that skating rink. And it's nice. They paint it green, they paint it green, three hundred, and then it starts with the word grass.
There we go.
Big white hole. And it's not, you don't say multiple skate, you don't say really big. This week.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, alright.
Any, any additional questions, comments? Okay, thank y'all. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
In the close, that motion carries for adjourn. Thank you.